Right of motion.
I move to adjust the agenda as Mr. Higgins just described.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Five oh. Um, join. Item D, approval of minutes for May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the May eighth, twenty eighteen board meeting as presented.
Second that. Discussion? All those in favor? The minutes for May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Recommend approve the minutes, May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen special board meeting as presented.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Item E, communications and correspondence.
Yes, Cecilia, there are six letters of resignation that I've distributed to board members. I'll take them up in my report. Results of a letter that I received and I believe you did as well, Mrs. Thomas from Central Transportation Museum in its regard to school safety.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening, you have my report. Information on the senior class, so last week obviously was graduation week. Students were terrific to work with. We had a practice Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a little bit on Thursday. Gave them Friday off. Heaven Center ended his graduation. The students were really excited about it all week and asking about him and it and it went really well. You know, this teacher's really good and it was a great night, Friday night. As far as this class, so you can see forty-one out of one hundred and five graduates are attending four-year schools, twenty-nine at two-year schools, six to the military, three are having a gap year, and twenty-six in the workforce, which is a lot for us. And, you know, and asking students about the reason for it and it's just, you know, finances more than anything. It's coming into play after they graduate. Class grade point average was an eighty-seven point six-six, which is very high. And taking one hundred and sixty-five college courses during their four-year career, that's very high too. So they're a class that will be missed. On Sunday, Mary Nelson and Kayla McPherson flew to Washington DC to participate in the National History Day that they qualified for. And so they're there until Thursday. We have Mrs. Cutney and Mrs. Bear are with them, so I've been texting Mrs. Cutney how everything's going. She sent me some pictures of them all and they're having a great time. They're staying at University of Maryland for the whole week. And so, yeah, it's good. And baseball, they play tomorrow at six-thirty right at Mansfield. That's a regional final. And now they've won fifteen in a row and that's been a lot of fun and exciting around school then. That's it. Any questions?
What happens if the baseball team wins tomorrow night? Where do they go from there?
They play Saturday at eleven in Bangor, right at Mansfield.
Wish them luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Gavin Ellin? Mr. Newitt. Okay, sorry, Mr. Newitt's not here, so.
He's coming.
He will be here.
He didn't want Mrs. Ellsworth being, but we, I can tell, we just were at the Rotary. They honored him this evening for his years of service in education in Ellsworth, so that was tremendous. So that's the update I can get, but he should be on his way.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And I hope you all listen to my report as well, not being sure exactly what format would be most helpful to you. I managed to do, at least beginning of this report, my usual focus, which is climate, school climate, and curriculum, and then community involvement, and then include some of the activities going on and some of the things that I've noted. Coming into the school with not very much time left to go, the first thing I wanted to do was observe what I was actually involved in. And I have to tell you, it was wonderful. In the first two days, I got in most of the classrooms and was able to see just the quality of professionalism in teaching that is available at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School. And as I mentioned last night, there were times when I planned on a two-minute visit and ended up staying ten or fifteen because I was learning things. And I thought, move over kid, I need to share this learning with you. And a lot of that went on. And I wrote this and I'm gonna read it because I think this says most of it all. Despite changes and uncertainties, the staff has remained focused on student learning and needs. It's a tribute to their professionalism. What I saw in those first couple of days and continue to see is a well-organized learning environment that is spotless most of the time. And that is so welcoming and inviting to parents and community members as they come through the door, but also for our kids. Sometimes people don't realize just exactly how much kids notice and what a huge difference it makes. When your environment looks like that and your teachers are as good as the ones that we have, only good things can happen with that recipe. It's absolutely phenomenal. They're good decision-makers. They've had a lot of decisions to make in the last couple of weeks that I've been there. They're positive, they're creative thinkers, and they're problem solvers. And one example of that is that we looked at the kindergarten screening. We're talking about next year. And we're talking about how to get off to the best possible start. This year will be over shortly, and with all the food we carry into next year, we also need to carry some new thinking. And so kindergarten teachers all got together with me and some of our special ed people who are amazing and extremely capable. We said, okay, why do we really want kindergarten screening? What's the purpose? And we dialogued about that for a few minutes. And I said, so what have you done in the past? Because I do a lot of that history making. So I know, I mean, you don't just change things if they're working, you leave them alone and build on that. But they said, well, Kathy, we're not happy. We're poor kids out of class. We're doing this, we're doing that. So what are some of our possible options? And we came up with about four. We eliminated about two and a half. And we talked about the possibility of kids coming half-day the first week. We were absolutely adamant they would come on the very first day. And because that's the first day of school, everybody wants to get on the bus, no matter how much they worry about coming to school. They want to get on the bus and they want to be there that first day of school without that joy and the excitement. And I said, okay, so that's something that has to stay. But the screening is so important because it informs instruction. It tells us where they are. It used to be done in a lot of the schools where I was kindergarten teacher, it used to be done in the fall, in the spring, I'm sorry. And by fall, you have different kids. They've grown. I mean, if they've done all the things that kids do, it's that growing and learning we pray for. So we said, okay, it has to happen in the fall. How can we do it with the least amount of disruption and ruin? We came up with an idea that we're, Mr. Higgins and I are still working, you know, wanting to see if that's viable. But a way to serve the purpose of informing instruction by finding out where students are at that point in time, but holding on to the things that we think are important for kids and families and the traditions of starting school on that first day. So while we're working out logistics in our head and trying to sort through the problem solving, I was so proud of that. I said, please, think outside the box because if you haven't been happy with the way you're doing it, it doesn't set the right tone for the kids, it doesn't set the right tone for the parents. Be thinking, what's the right thing for the kids? And that would be the basis for all decision-making that we're going here for. And I know that's been true in the past as well. But it was really an important message for them to hear from me. And it was wonderful for me to experience that kind of problem solving. And it's happened at other grades, it's happened at other levels, and around other issues. So I felt like, wow, I had no idea. The curriculum is solid and we know that because kids are gaining in areas where we're concerned about those gains. We're talking about what else do we need to use, what kind of resources can we access that are already in place? And what does the community have that we could use? We have kids who are accelerated in math. We don't have to come back to curriculum and move all the way up or gifted and talented. Those are wonderful options, but they're not the only ones. We have such an incredible amount of human resources out in the community. People with skills and talents and gifts. And our kids get two things if we employ those people to help us with that growing and learning process. They learn that there are people out there in the content area who've applied it and have wonderful histories of employment and things that they are passionate about. And that says to the kids, that content area is really important because it translates into the real world. But the other thing is it connects them with people in the community so they're really a part of that. I think one of the things most of us in education worry about, and a lot of parents, that's for sure, is kids turning into themselves because we have all kinds of ways that they can do that. But for them to know that they're part of something bigger than themselves and their family and their school players and their school. They're part of this wonderful place called Ellsworth. And there are so many people out there who are willing to help us. So my first couple of weeks, that's where I've been, that's what we're doing, and that's where we're going. And it just, it's felt good all the way around. I've included some of the other activities and not all of them, but I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. If your question was, is she having a good time, the answer is yes.
Thank you for answering. Mrs. Bowles?
Good evening. First, I just wanted to kind of highlight our annual HHTC awards ceremony. We filled the EHS auditorium with the Bleacher's poll, which is again another indication of our growth and the support we have in the community. I wanted to highlight, we inducted thirty new National Technical Honor Society students into our NTHS, which is our largest number to date. And we also inducted two honorary members. We inducted Mr. Josh Reardon, who was an automotive instructor and an auto diesel ed tech. And we inducted Jan Newitt from EEMS. We did pull off the surprise and inducted her. She was shocked for all of her work in mentoring our students and interning, having student interns through our early childhood department. So we're very grateful for that. I also wanted to highlight, we gave out three scholarships. It's the first time we've given out three scholarships. We, last year started the Melmac Scholarship. And this year, that two thousand dollar award was given to Delaney Dow and Ellsworth High School senior, who did the bridge year program in culinary arts. And then Bar Harbor Bank and Trust started a new scholarship this year and has awarded career and technical scholarships to students from around Maine, Hampshire, and Vermont. But we were lucky enough to have two students be honored with that, Lillian Leinberger from Dearest, Stonington, who was a full-time student here into health occupations, and Haley McCabe, another bridge year student in our health occupations program. They each received fifteen hundred dollars. So that was a fabulous night. NTHS, over the last few weeks of school, worked on a community fundraiser. Families First Community came to us and asked if we would partner with them. They have mobile workers that drive around the community and when they see people in need, they wanted to have food kits in their trunk that they could pass out to people. So we helped put those food kits together. We did a food drive here in the school. And NTHS donated those food kits to them, so that was a nice community service project. What I did for the last couple of parts of my report is highlighted some either upcoming things or thanked businesses. As you know, a lot of what we do with our kids is get them ready for employability. So first, for law enforcement, I just wanted to kind of highlight that we have several students accepted into programs for the summer. A lot of them are continuing their education over the summer. First, Hunter Farnold was accepted into the Maine Junior Trooper Academy this summer. He's from Ellsworth High School. That was exciting. And Elon Zabori from MBI High School is going to work for the Southwest Harbor Master and learn a little bit more about marine patrol. So he's very excited. Then we have two students doing the Fire Academy this summer. And many of you probably got to know Jesse last year. He's the one walking around downtown Ellsworth doing parking tickets. One of my students, he'll be back this summer doing that again.
I saw him yesterday and welcome him back to our downtown.
Yes, he's very excited.
Very efficient.
He is very, he is very efficient. For multimedia design, we have more students intern this year and this upcoming summer than we've had in the past now that we're doing more pathways and kids are specializing more, kids are getting more opportunities. We want to thank Ellsworth American, Maine Public Broadcasting, Pulse Marketing, Reach Marketing, The Grand, and Jackson Lab. Their media department and creative department is actually taking our interns now through their department as well. So with our collaboration with Jackson Lab for biomedical, we are starting other collaborations with them as well, which is really exciting. And on to biomedical. They have had a busy few weeks and have made some really great connections with our new biomedical program. Our juniors just did some, a full day there and worked with Dr. Hasham, who's one of their renowned scientists, and got to do a bio methods training course with him and receive a bio methods certification. Through that, they learned about basic mouse procedures if they were to work in the mouse lab that's coming to Ellsworth. So they did some trainings around that as well, which the kids came back and some of them are all about those mice now. Every year, Jackson Lab hosts an open house and they take students from all around the state. And so we were a little nervous because all of our juniors applied to go to it. And they were pretty clear with us upfront that they probably would only take a couple because they have to do a cross-section from around the state and half of our kids got in. So we were really excited about that. They took a good cross-section from all of our high schools that sent us. And they got to go to four different workshops, learning all about different bio research, whether it's neurology, addiction, cancer, and diabetes. So they got a really good introduction to what kinds of different types of research they can do at the lab. And finally, while they were there, a lot of them made connections for their senior year. So senior year in biomedical, they can take one of two tracks. They can either go the biotech route or they can do the medical route, medical research, scientific research. And they can do more pre-vet, doctor, surgeon type of research. That's senior year. So I've listed for you in my report some of the connections that we've made for this upcoming year for kids from all of our different communities. And we're really excited. One of our Bucksport juniors that was at the open house, there was a UMaine biology professor there who's doing specialized research this coming year, made a connection with one of our Bucksport kids. And she's gonna do her internship up at UMaine or in the upcoming year with this professor. So we're excited about that. We have two kids, one who's gonna work with a travel-inquired veterinarian and one who's gonna work in an emergency veterinary hospital as part of their pre-vet track. We have other students that are gonna intern with a pharmacist and one who's gonna do physical therapy slash sports trainer internship. And that's just a few examples. So we're excited with the growth of the program and the types of different things kids are gonna have the opportunity to do their senior year. Finally, our forty thousand dollar push to go to nationals is coming to a close this weekend. Our last fundraiser for the year is this weekend at CrossFit Breakwater. You do not have to be a CrossFit member. We ask for people that want to contribute or go try a workout to come. It's twenty dollars a person. If you want to come with a team of three, you can, or come by yourself and we'll put you on a team. But that's gonna be our last fundraiser and we suspect we have fundraised the forty thousand. I think even if we get thirty people there Saturday, we will cross the finish line. So our thirty people will board the plane for Louisville, Kentucky and not pay one dime to go. So that is again a tribute to the community that we live in, all of Hancock County. Because we got donations from, all the way from MBI, Bucksport, every single community that has kids going on this trip helped contribute. And again, thank you for your support because it was a big shift of change for the staff to be able to go as well. So your commitment to that as well is extremely appreciated. Any questions?
Not a question, Amy, but I just wanted to do, your hallway looks really nice. I really, I hadn't had an opportunity to see all the banners. And it really looks nice out there.
Thank you. They just started doing that a couple of years ago. And it really adds a nice touch and it shows how many state championships we've won, so it is a really nice tribute, so thank you. Appreciate it.
So our graduation is tomorrow night. We're very excited about that. And I'm gonna, what I did in the report was to kind of show some, give you a little bit of a picture of the adult ed program because I think a lot of people don't understand the breadth of what we do. And so I've had to do a lot, I've had to learn quite a lot about data. It's been a data year for me. And so I said, why don't I show you guys the numbers? So we, I don't need to go through all of these in detail. You can read through them. We do have nineteen graduates. We had, we picked up one more last night and I'm hoping to pick up one more tomorrow if it gets just enough points for the reading test. So we have twenty, I hope we'll have twenty graduates tomorrow night. We have an honor society as well, and there's a National Adult Ed Honor Society. And we have eight people who will be inducted tomorrow night in that. We had thirteen CNA students successfully complete the program this year. And the number here is incorrect for college transitions. We had twenty-four people in that. So we offer college preparation activities, so somebody can take an algebra class or something like that. But when you do college transitions, what you're doing, you're committing to academic study, college readiness activities, and then technology preparation for college as well. So it's a bigger commitment. But I think these numbers are, I was impressed with these numbers. We spend a lot of time with students. And we don't always think about that because we do honestly have some students that come in and take a practice test for the high set and they are ready to take the test. And I'm here to say that some of those young people, and it usually is young people who are in that situation, it changes their life as much as the people who are in our program for five years, the sort of burden that is lifted. You'll hear more about that if you come tomorrow night. But does anybody have any questions about the numbers here? One of the things that we do a lot of, and it's evidenced here, is assessment and advising. And if you notice on the back of this page, it shows the kinds of activities that we do. It's pretty extensive because we sort of feel like one of the most important things for lifelong, to create lifelong learners is for people to really understand how they learn and what their interests are and what motivates them, as well as sort of the nuts and bolts of what they need to learn. So it is pretty extensive. And the one that I'm most excited about is this WOWI, which is, has anybody heard of that? It's a new, new-ish assessment actually out of Arizona. But it's a, it's the, I've done career advising for thirty years now and it's the best tool that I've seen so far. It tests aptitude, interest, but also job style. So it's kind of like a personality thing, but it's more like what, you know, whether you're motivated by deadlines or whether you're need structure or that kind of thing. So that's interesting. So we, the depth of what we do with folks is, I think, more than what people might expect that we do, so I wanted to share that. And then, like Amy Bowles, we work, we depend on community partners in a big way, so I wanted to list some of them. Obviously, our biggest partner is the University College in Ellsworth because we're co-located with them and that's a great experience. But tomorrow night, for the first time, we'll be honoring four volunteers through Literacy Volunteers Bangor that have donated more than a hundred hours this year. So obviously, they're a big partner as well. And we're working very closely with adult ed programs in our new region. Within the region is Hancock and Washington County. We've been divided into hubs. And we apply for, we are required to apply for grants jointly and so on. So it's been an interesting year of building partnerships. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Ellin? I tried to get Mr. Gavin Ellin to give your report, but she said you're on your way.
Sorry, we're late. Your excuse. Thank you. Life at the middle school has gone well. In school news, last week we capped off fifth grade's Colonial Week, the Colonial Unit, with Colonial Day. The kids dressed up in Colonial attire and they had prepared and feasted on the food that they had made of that time period. I passed on the pumpkin soup. But there are a lot of good things that the kids made. Grade sevens Medieval Fair takes place this Thursday. You can see the tent already on the Deluse Field. It runs in the evening from six to seven-thirty. And the kids are gonna go to it during the school day. It's Mr. Libby's final fair after starting this event over twenty years ago. So shout out to Mr. Libby for all those years of making that happen. Another shout out goes to John McDowell. He is retiring, just as Mr. Libby will be at the end of this year. But he's done a lot of field days over the years and I'll thank John for organizing and running all of those. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday are the days coming up for each grade to have a field day. It was really nice. Our eighth graders do a reception for the faculty. And all the teachers and ed techs and support staff that worked with those kids in kindergarten on through were honored last Friday. And the kids did a nice job with their presentations. And what was also really nice is, it's not even on the agenda, but I'm talking about anyone, sorry. I'll get to the next one and then my dad. It was really nice that Bell and Yonmore Fox is down at the bottom. Helen's Restaurant donated all the pies for that event, so it was really quite special. But I started, I'll go back to school news. At the end of May, which Stanley Subaru in Hanford recognized as Teacher Appreciation Month, they came down, the owner of Stanley Subaru and the representative from Hanford, I forgot the names. But they gave each teacher a very generous Hanford kid card. And teachers, as you know, put a lot of their own money into their practice and it was greatly appreciated. The teachers were most grateful and I'd just like to thank those two businesses for that kindness. Co-curricular news, last week, from Thursday to Saturday, Willy Wonka Junior was performed five times. It was typically the musicals in the fall. We did it in the spring this year. Jasmine did a great job with a lot of support from high school students that really serve as mentors for the young kids. I know Fred was there and got to see it. It was a great show, a really good time. In parent news, eighth grade has a lot of events coming right up. Their class trip this is Friday, we're heading to Kenobi Park in New Hampshire. Eighth grade dances on Monday and the final assembly for their graduation per se is on Tuesday, but next week at six. This year, we'll give out report cards at the end of the year like we always do to the students. the students. Instead of posting class lists on the windows, I like to keep that door private, if you will, and just will mail out class plans because it's coming here. My personal note, this is my last board meeting of my life. And I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Higgins, and citizens of Ellsworth for a lot of support for my twenty-nine years of doing this. And I really like Ellsworth, and I call my school our school, but I, I really enjoyed what I've been able to do over those years, and it's been fun, it's been work, it's been with great people. I certainly miss a lot of it, some of it I won't. But that's okay. But there's a lot more good than, than I, I'm glad that I had the chance to work a lot of, a lot of kids with me. Thanks for that.
I'm gonna take you back to nineteen eighty-one.
I have a lot more here than.
Your snack bar opened for the first time in nineteen eighty-one. Want that?
That was my first year.
Okay. The Ellsworth Historical Society was created in nineteen eighty-one.
I see I'm old.
Because we have Superintendent Higgins, the younger here. Dick Scott was recruited by the New York Yankees in the eleventh round of the amateur league. So you were hired as a teacher in nineteen eighty-one by Mr. Higgins, the elder.
Yeah, right.
And because we're the school board, we really, really feel we're important, and we want to know, who was on the school board when you were hired?
I know, same say, sure. I think there's an Erlinbach, maybe not, okay.
De La Case.
A D, D, love D.
Appreciate it.
I hired Dee's daughter.
Barb Goodyear.
I remember Barb.
Sandra Carter. And Dr. Van Pelt was filling in.
Yeah.
And so now, we're going to fast forward a few years to nineteen eighty-nine. Now, in nineteen eighty-nine, they closed the A Wing, which made you move a few times in your career. Like, I figured out you probably had seven or eight offices in, in your career. The DA program was started at the Brony Moore School in nineteen eighty-nine, and Ellsworth High School were co-champions of the Salker Class B Tournament with Yarmouth. They apparently couldn't come up with a real winner, so. Now, that was the year you were hired as a principal, and we still had Mr. Higgins, the elder. And, but who did we have on the school board?
Bruce Sawyer got hired.
Oh, okay.
Not to that.
That's fine.
Sir, go sir to the board.
Believe me, the city of Ellsworth does not have its reports easily available. So I had Larry Vernal.
I remember Larry, I saw Larry tonight.
Phyllis Carney.
Phyllis is great. Teaching, awesome.
Tom McDonald.
Remember Tom, a lot of kids.
Yeah. With Lucy.
Luke was, yeah, hired his daughter.
And my bench member was on the board in nineteen eighty-two, but I couldn't figure out if he was on the board in nineteen eighty-nine, but I was wondering if Ken Shea might have been still on board.
I still remember Kenny.
Okay.
I mean, I remember Kenny forever.
We're gonna fast forward to this year. The population.
All right, we get to check the wounds.
The population has grown sixteen hundred plus in the time since you have been employed in the school department, which means the population of the schools have also exploded.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-nine years of working with many, many teachers and hundreds of children. And you have a gift of working with pre-adolescent and adolescent children, which include, you know, growth spurs, voice changes, raging hormones, you know, it's, it's really incredible.
It's all there.
And they all know that you love running.
I do.
Bruce Springsteen.
I do.
And Mrs. Newitt.
Rocks.
You have shown by example that it's all right to take risks by putting yourself out as an example on many, many occasions. We, the Ellsworth School Board, would like to present you with a couple pieces of memorabilia.
Beer? Did you make a beer in that van?
Dan probably already has a room all set for your stuff. You're right?
Yeah.
You better, if you don't, if you don't, you better start cleaning now. You've always wanted your students to do their best and to have fun doing it, and we want to thank you for the many years at helm of the Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School, because you certainly have earned this retirement and.
Weepy.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
And also, we know how proud the community is to have you, and I showed the other night when you were at your stadium pitch.
Thank you, Brenda, appreciate it. Should I open this now?
Oh, definitely.
Yes. Well, there's nice kind things there. I'll read that in my, it's not retirement, I won't wait that long.
Well, you don't have spare time, so.
Women on the PTF convinced me to wear a tutu. This year's Rock-a-Fa, so.
You rocked it, Jim.
I'm hiking out my tutu there. Hey, thanks. Notice I didn't post those on the Facebook page, somebody else did. That's a good shot, though. And this one, I, my daughter, who lives in Colorado, actually sent that to me. I said, where did that come from? And this was at, at the EHS graduation last Friday, when Mr. Clifford was tying it up to say thank you, and I really appreciated that, Dan. A lot of people stood up, and it felt pretty good. Stood on a chair, so people could see, who, who is that guy? But it meant a lot, and this means a lot, and I thank you for your kindness, and that was a great, thank you all, saved them forever. Thank you very much.
Okay. Christian point made at the core. So thanks for making me follow that. But I will just, I will say my piece, but let's see. So Title I Literacy Night, this event was held on May fourteenth at EDMS, and we had Grayson from Bird's Acre with a presentation, as well as book giveaways and fun activities. We want to thank the many families that joined our Title I faculty to learn a lot of really fun things to do with literacy at home. This is something that our faculty has been doing for years, and put a lot of time into, and was one of the pieces that we were commended on during our title audit, our dedicated faculty at the school, and we're very grateful. And I'll say, year after year, that one of the cornerstones of our elementary and middle school is the faculty of Tina Young, and Mira Perry, and Jessica Freeman, and Kelly Rudolph, who do an amazing job working with our kids and helping them in their reading. They find them every day, wherever they are in school, and work with them one-on-one, and it really does make a huge impact. So we're very grateful to them. Our comprehensive needs assessment, the work on this assessment continues. We completed the meetings with our planning team that included parents, faculty members, board members, and administrators. We want to thank them for their participation and their valuable feedback. This information is being used to complete the document and help us think about district-wide academic and behavioral goals for our coming years, and it's a process that I think was really, really interesting and brought out a lot of really interesting feedback. It is amazing when you bring a new group of people together who don't usually work together, who have always been a part of the community but haven't necessarily met in the same room, and ask a question about what do you see, you know, what do you know about the community? And the dynamics of the different interactions and discussions were really, really valuable. And so I'm hoping that we'll continue that process. And on that note, I want to thank Mr. Newitt, who, before he had decided to retire, offered to be on the planning team committee, and could have easily had a pass from doing that, but continued and really contributed so much to those conversations because of his, his knowledge of the school district. So I'm really grateful to you for that. The Title I After School Program, I want to thank our wonderful staff of our After School Program, which wrapped up for the year on Thursday, May twenty-fourth. Just had a little bit of thank you get-together today with them to get their reflections on how the program went. Megan Merrill, Sandra Pearlman, Rebecca Maddox Wilbur, Brenda Berry, and Michelle York spent many, many, many hours over the past year, even not on the clock, when, when kids would come to them before they were actually ready to start after school, or stay late because their parents had come yet, or they would run into them in the halls. They spent hours over what we had even budgeted, because they put in extra time, because they care about those kids, and they really provided an engaging instructional program for thirty-five of our Title I A students in the elementary and middle school. Their final family event, if you didn't catch it, was at the Students' Restaurant. It was held in the art room, where the students were each selling their food. They had Ellsworth money, and they, they had made it all themselves. They spent two weeks planning, and they were working in the kitchens, and they formed groups to decide how to create food from all different countries. And they shared, they wrote handwritten recipes, and they, they searched online, and they rewrote them, and they put their own interpretations and their spins on them, and they took a lot of pride in the hours that it took in the last week to design pretty much the best food court I've ever been to. It was very, very impressive. We're really grateful to the many families, it was a very huge turnout, who attended to share the students' obvious pride and their work. And I really want to thank the faculty again, because they took on this project at the end of the year with so much enthusiasm. It's a completely crazy time of year, there's field trips, there's finishing assessments, and they decided, let's get kids in the kitchen, right? So that was really valuable, because the kids were so proud of it, and it really showcased the accomplishments of their students, which they have proven time and again as they're old. Finally, our Title I Summer Program. This year, our Title I Summer Program will begin on July third, running through to July twenty-seventh. Students in grades K through four will work with two teachers and two ed techs from eight o'clock to eleven each morning, Monday through Friday, on literacy and math skills. They tend to choose themes and make it fun, they do a lot of outside learning. They'll then have the opportunity to attend the Y summer camp at Webpon for the second half of the day. You know, there's, there's a lot of parts of my job that are bureaucratic and grant writing and number crunching, but this is one of the biggest pieces that I'm proud of, that the Ellsworth Board and the community support this program, that allows up to thirty-five children to both have academic enrichment and then fun exposure at no cost to them to the beautiful outdoors for one month each summer. So I think it's really a program we should all be proud of in this community, and means a lot to the students. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Certainly, as Rachel said, my report's not going to hold a candle to the history lesson that Mrs. Thomas gave us. But we'd just like to talk briefly about the legislature. As you all know, the adjournment back in the month of April or May, it's been so long that I'm not sure what the date was. Recent reports indicate that they're going to be called back into a special session to consider some budget-related items, which we hopefully include LD eighteen sixty-nine, which is an act to establish the total cost of education and state and local contributions to education. That would bring subsidy forward, and it also governs the local contribution to education. We're hoping that will also be included with that is, in addition to general purpose aid, which will reduce that local commitment to funding on our Ellsworth. The other piece that we do not know at this point in time is whether or not the bills that address proficiency-based education will be addressed in a special session. You know, this is being discussed at this point as budgetary items, but certainly as that information comes forth and the legislature does come back, we'll keep the board and the community involved. We have a couple of, on the report I gave to you folks, there is a teacher nomination and administrative appointment tonight, which will take up when those items come out. But I would like to announce one staff transfer. Matt Downs, who's been teaching for us for a couple of years, splitting his time between middle school and high school, will be transferred to the full-time middle school physical education position next year, replacing John McDonald. He's been down to see it, congratulations on that. Also have a number of letters of resignation and your retirement that were circulated. Kate Anderson, grade two teacher at the EDMS. Alicia Brendel, ed tech three at Ellsworth High School. Michelle Barnard, guidance administrator assistant. Tim McCluskey, EMS principal. Stephen Hunt, mathematics teacher at Ellsworth High School. And Ben Speed, HT, HCTC multimedia design instructor. Have all submitted reservations, so we'll be moving on. Just as a plug, and I know this isn't live tonight, but this will get out there tomorrow, we still have some vacancies to fill for FY nineteen. We have a science teacher at Ellsworth High School, a grade eight teacher in social studies and science at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School, but I know Mr. Newitt is really working to fill before he takes his last day here. I think we'll be successful on that, Jim. And a special education teacher at EDMS. My next to last item is to just announce the end of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. Wednesday, June twentieth is the final student day of the eighteen-nineteen school year, and the buses will begin to load students at eleven-thirty at Ellsworth High School. Following the departure of students, all ESD staff members will meet at the theater for the annual presentation of service pins and recognition of retiring staff members. You know, Jim, we may talk about you there that night as well, or that afternoon.
Bring it.
But as we approach the final student day, I'd really like to express congratulations to all of our students for their many accomplishments and successes in academic, co-inextracurricular, and community-based activities during the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Students attending Ellsworth Schools take advantage of the wide variety of opportunities that are available to them, and achieve and succeed at the highest of levels. In supporting them to do that, I'd also like to recognize all staff members of the Ellsworth School Department for their continued outstanding work with our students. We're fortunate to have a staff that is so dedicated to serving the best interests of our students and helping them achieve at such high levels. I'd like to close this evening by just saying a few words about Mr. Newitt. As I was sitting here listening to Mrs. Thomas do a history lesson, kind of counter around Jim Newitt's career here in Ellsworth, it really hit home that there are not a lot of educators, particularly administrators, who have the longevity that you have had, Jim, over twenty-nine years. It's a long time, not just in any position, but sort of as a principle of an educational institution. Throughout those twenty-nine years, you've seen, as we heard tonight, a lot of board members come and go, a lot of students come and go, a lot of teachers come and go, and a lot of superintendents come and go.
True.
You've outlasted all of them. But I think what's more important is, than, rather than outlasting all of them, it's what you have done to the service of students, staff, and community over the twenty-nine years as principal and prior nine years as a teacher. Not only will you be missed, but your legacy will be long remembered in the community of Ellsworth and at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School. I want to thank you for the service that you've given to the students and staff over the years, and wish you the very, very best in your retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And yes, I'm sorry, there's one last letter of resignation that we did receive today. Shannon Westfall, our teacher at Ellsworth High School, has retired to take a job closer to home.
Item H is committee reports, and I think we're probably going to take that up during policy and personnel.
Yep. Policy, you have that last week?
I is all business, we have none. J, new business. Discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-country trip.
Mrs. Cuddy is not available tonight, so will Mr. Clifford just want to present this?
So again, like this past April vacation, Mrs. Cuddy's planning on another Europe trip, this one to France and Spain, and it'll be eleven days, and she's hoping to have very star meetings very soon, and just based on feedback from the last trip, she knows there, she'll probably have between thirty and thirty-five students, you know, maybe more possibly, because there's no other trips until spring break. And working with this same agency, and very excited about it. And working with this same agency, and very excited about it. All the information is right there in front of you. And it's going to be more of a foreign language slash art trip. That's a focus on this trip.
This trip was brought back to the board this evening following the conversation that we had at your last workshop, where there was certainly wholehearted endorsement and support for foreign trips. While you tasked Mr. Clifford, Mrs. Wright, and myself with working out some schedules and protocols for how many trips are going to be taking place, this would be the one trip that's planned at this point this year. So we're very comfortable bringing it back to you for consideration this evening.
I make a motion that we approve the overnight trip out of country that's presented by Mr. Clifford.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? J 2, first read of amended policy. Joanne Kelly, give us a second.
So, yes, so we met and we did make a few changes, or recommended changes, to the policy. We are recommending that students, seniors who... Just give me a moment. I've got it. Students who are seniors who participate in school-sponsored co-intracurricular activities must be enrolled at a minimum in the equivalent of four full-credit academic courses during their senior year. However, students classified as seniors who require fewer than the equivalent of four full-credit academic courses to fulfill graduation requirements may enroll in learning experiences necessary to fulfill graduation requirements. That was the major change. Do you want to add something, Joanne?
The copy that I think you all received, that I'm reading from, the last sentence said the schedule must... It's still part of that same paragraph after the students classified as seniors. It says the student's schedule must have parental consent. I believe that's actually a mistype there. It was supposed to say all student schedules, not the student schedule, which would imply that we're only talking about the students in this change. It was supposed to say all student schedules must have parental consent.
Make that a separate paragraph, Joanne?
Please, yeah, because as it reads now, it attaches to that same paragraph, yeah.
Do we need a motion to accept?
I move. Yes, I move. I move to accept first read of amended policy I K F graduation requirements as recommended by the policy committee.
Second.
Discussion?
May I add to that? I thought that the conversation that the policy committee had, which was a good follow-up to the entire board's discussion at the workshop, was really an outstanding conversation. As you can see, there were also a number of other points that were discussed that were discussed during the board's workshop that were also discussed at the policy committee meeting. I think that the language is put forth ahead of you with the one amendment that Joanne has requested. I think it's good language, I think it accomplishes what the policy committee brought forth to the board. And I think it's good policy. The reason that you have two separate sections, remember currently your policy still is in two different sections. You have students who are graduating under your credit-based system. That's where paragraph E on page 2 would be. You'll also have students starting a couple of years who are graduating under the new proficiency-based system under current law, and that would be what you'd see in paragraph H on page 4. If you look at the language, it's virtually identical, it just, the biggest change is credits on the top and experiences on the second. But I think it's good policy.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Five of all. Day 3, appointment of administrative stack, Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School.
Mr. Travis, defer to you, Mr. Markosian. We'd like to mention to the board, as you know, at our last meeting, prior to that, we appointed Kathy Lewis to serve as interim principal at the E S for the balance of the 2017-18 school year. And at the time we made that appointment, we were talking about doing a full-fledged search for replacement to that position. In having a conversation with Mrs. Lewis, she indicated, as she did this evening, the fact that she was enjoying what she was seeing, and really finding a lot of positives taking place at the school, and really making a difference in the short time that she had been here, and indicated she might be interested in serving further if we were interested. So I took it as an opportunity to speak with board leadership, Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Markosian, about that potential, rather than doing a search this late in the year, to hire someone who's already been here for a period of time, to have a consistency over the next year. Board leadership was comfortable with me having that conversation with Mrs. Lewis. I subsequently had that conversation with Mrs. Lewis, and Mrs. Lewis and I subsequently met with the personnel committee, Mr. Markosian and Mr. Hudson, and are coming forth this evening with the following. I will just read this. Since being appointed to serve as interim principal at EMS in May of 2018, Mrs. Lewis has made a positive impact and contribution to the school. Rather than engage in a full-scale search for a K-4 principal at this time of year, we are recommending after our meeting with the personnel committee, Kathy Lewis to be the EMS principal for the 2018-19 school year. Mrs. Lewis met with the board's personnel committee last evening. And from my perspective, and I'll let Paul and Rob add to this, she was impressed with her knowledge of education and of children, and years of successful experience in education, which ranged from over 20 years of successful classroom teaching experience and over 20 years of successful experience in leadership positions, including more recently, multiple interim and one-year, two-year appointments in Hancock County. We're recommending her for a full one-year contract for next year, and we plan on conducting the search for a K-4 principal in the early spring of 2020, which is the typical time of year when you conduct a search. That would be my recommendation, but I would defer to the members of the personnel committee to add to that.
In 2019?
19, excuse me, yes. Paul, I was trying.
Mrs. Lewis, thank you for being willing to step up and do this. Last evening when we met with you, I am largely inspired by your passion and your insight and your experience and your, just the way you, just the way you think and the way you relate to people, both staff and students. So again, we're really grateful to have you. This was, would have been, I think, a difficult search to conduct at this time of year, so we really appreciate.
And some mutual opportunity coming and going, so thank you as well.
Rob?
Kids are in good hands.
They sure are, we have a great staff.
I make a motion to appoint Kathy Lewis as the Ellsworth Elementary School principal for a one-year term commencing July 1, 2019, and to authorize a superintendent to execute a contract setting forth the terms and conditions of employment on behalf of the school board. Commencing 2018, sorry.
Could I also ask, please make that August? It says, I know it says July, but I'd ask you to make that August one.
August 1st, 2018. I second the motion.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Consideration of teaching, congratulations.
Yes, this is the time of year when we are starting to bring forth the successful candidates for vacancies in our school system. And we have one to nominate for you this evening. This is the librarian lady special at Ellsworth High School. We'd like to nominate Catherine Hessler, the librarian position at Ellsworth High School. Catherine Hessler impressed the interview committee with her educational background and experience, most recently as director of the Carver Memorial Library in Searsport. During the term of her current employment, she's increased membership and services to patrons and developed a strong working relationship with the public schools in that community. Her references were very strong, and the community believes she'd be a solid addition to the high school staff. One of the things that stood out in my interview with her was the connection that she made with the school system in Searsport and the school-age resources that she was able to put into the public library. I think that she would be a positive addition to the staff at Ellsworth High School. We nominate her for a first-year probationary contract.
I move that we confirm superintendent's nomination of Catherine Hessler as D H S librarian for the first-year probationary contract for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
We're all agree.
Discussion? All those in favor? Five of all. Discussion and consideration of authorizing superintendent or personnel committee to act on behalf of the school board and appointing teaching staff in the month of July and August.
This is an item that we do on an annual basis, and we've put in there the option of either the superintendent or the personnel committee. Because as you know, with our meetings for the board scheduled the second Tuesday of each month, sometimes those meetings don't fall at a time that's consistent with being able to have people approved for teaching positions, as you know, many times people are looking for positions in other school systems. So we're asking for that in...
If we find a good candidate, we don't want to move that person along until the next meeting, so...
Or let somebody else hire them in another district.
Yeah.
Motion? Authorize the superintendent to personnel committee back on behalf of the school board and appointing teaching staff in the month of July and August.
Second. Yes. Discussion? All those in favor? Discussion and consideration of jobs for main graduates program.
Mr. Clifford, I don't know if you'd like to come up front and answer any questions on this. If any come up. Sure. This is an opportunity that came for us after your last board meeting. If you're not familiar with the jobs for main graduates program, this program has been in place in the state of Maine for a number of years, it's very successful. And what we're looking at is an opportunity for the next two years to have at no cost to the Ellsworth School Department, the jobs for main graduates specialist. When I say a specialist, that's a teacher-level position, who's trained and supported and employed by jobs for main graduates, and they deliver competency-based model curriculum to 40 to 50 students per core program, which allows for smaller class sizes. Each partner in the school establishes a J M G advisory board, including participation of teachers, guidance councils, and administration. I've seen this program operate in other districts, and what it does is it provides this core curriculum to a collection of students for which we oftentimes are not able to provide the types of services that we'd like to. We see increases in graduation rates, we see increases in job placement, we see increases in career exploration opportunities. It's an excellent program, and from my perspective, a couple of things that we have going for us. It's no cost for two years. I can tell you there are school systems right now that have it, and their annual contribution to this program is $25,000 a year. We have an opportunity to have this in our school for two years to provide services to students. We also have one of our guidance councils, Sarah White, worked for J M G, so she has experience with the program, so there's a natural connection within our school. I think it's one of those cases where, really, it's a no-brainer to move forward with this. Clifford, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, no, I'm excited about it also. It is, we need something in between our regular population and our fourth-door kids, and I think this fits nicely in that, to help grab those kids and really support those kids.
In the packet that I distributed to you, when you look at the core competencies, they're broken down into a number of areas. Career development, job attainment, job survival, basic competencies, leadership and self-development competencies, personal skills competencies. Career development, job attainment, job survival. Really, it's an outstanding program. Now, the question that may come is, what happens at the end of two years? Well, Craig Larrabee, who was the director of this, answered the question in the following way. They're anticipating getting additional funding, which may permit extension of this program at no cost after the two-year period. And he said, he hopes at the very least, what we would have to determine at the end of a two-year period going to a third year is potentially paying half of that $25,000 cost. When you look at the numbers in the packet that I sent you, when it looks at increasing graduation rates, no money for this program is a great investment in having more kids graduate and move forward and a successful opportunity. And even if you're paying $12,000 or $25,000, one of my fellow superintendents said there are five to six to eight kids in his schools that graduate each year that otherwise might not have. When you look at $12,000, $25,000, that's a small investment for a lot of success.
So, Dan, this is a J M G employee that would be placed in our school?
Yes, and what we will do is, if the board approves this program, we will work with Craig Larrabee, and we will hire that person with them. They will be their employee, but to the extent possible, those people will be a member of the E H S staff.
Gotcha.
But they are employees of J M G, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we support entering into an agreement with jobs for main graduates to implement the program as presented.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to know, and I published your best, the spec one's up here. These students would be students that don't necessarily come to Hancock County Tech Center, but are within the high school, that are not in fourth door but are struggling to to stay there. Okay, that's all right.
There's a criteria in the packet where students would be identified as the replacement students.
Okay.
For model population.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Graduation has negotiated agreement between the Ellsworth School Board and A F S C M E Council 90, to A L C O, to the Ellsworth Bus Driver Unit.
There is an executive session option there if the board wants to go to the executive session, excuse me, executive session to discuss the agreement that's been sent to you before you go live. You don't need to, if you don't want to, it's only there if you need it.
Anybody need?
So, so we won't?
No, I'm not going to do that.
Yeah. So the...
Can you tell us a little bit about the process of the process, where you are?
Yes, so the personnel committee has been meeting, has met with the bus drivers unit, and we had successful negotiations. We were able to come to an agreement with all the articles in one bargaining session. And following some tidying up of language, we were able to, then, the bus drivers voted to ratify it, and now it's going to board to ratify it on our behalf. So it was a very gratifying process because there was, the two sides worked together. First, you know, set out by finding common ground in a lot of the, most of the articles, and then working out any of the details that still need to be worked out. Very fruitful process, and I really appreciate the members of that association who came to the table and worked in good faith to bring this about, so thank you. So thank you.
I'd also add, I appreciate Paul recognizing negotiators for the bus drivers and the manner in which they came to the table and worked cooperatively. I'd also like to credit Paul and Rob, our personnel committee, for also coming to the table and working collaboratively and cooperatively with the bus drivers unit. You know, it's unheard of in our business to have many negotiations completed in one meeting. And to me, this says a lot about the people on both sides of the table, so I think in giving credit to the bus drivers, we also need to give credit to our personnel committee for their job well done.
Thank you. And we should, let's give credit to Jim Mackey also, who's the union representative who came to work with the bus drivers. He was very professional and agreed to work with us well.
I make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for 2018 through 2021 as presented between the Ellsworth School Board and the AFSCME Council ninety-three, AFLCO, for the Ellsworth Bus Driver Unit.
I second that. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
So we have two, two additional associations that we are bargaining with at this time to, for a new three-year contract with each, and one of them is the custodians and maintenance staff, and we've actually completed negotiations with them as well in terms of reaching tentative agreements. Again, there's a little bit of language that needs to be tidied up, and that's, we're expecting that that will get completed shortly, and then it will go to the members of that association for ratification, and then if, once that happens, it will come back to the board for us to ratify it. And so, again, that was a great process and great efforts on both sides of the table. And another one in session, same session, I agree with you.
I would just add on to what Dan, Mr. Higgins has already said, thanking you and Rob. I, I think it would be truthful in saying that's absolutely unprecedented to, to get these kind of contracts negotiated in such a timely and efficient manner.
And we have assistants that we're working with, and we, we've had some meetings with them, and we have, looking forward, we don't have an additional one scheduled, but we should be able to schedule that shortly, and look forward to wrapping up that process as well. Fairly similar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And K, calendar announcements. Policy committee meeting to be announced?
It wants to be announced because the, we typically meet the first week of the month, but the first week of the month would be in the week of the fourth, so hopefully some dates out. I don't think, I'm not interested in meeting on the fourth.
Meeting. School board workshop Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, in the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at six o'clock. And the next school board meeting will be Tuesday, July tenth, in City Council Chambers, City Hall at six-thirty. Item L is a German.